Okay.
Changes are the change. That they're only out there.
Exactly.
So.
That is.
So yeah.
Good stuff.
Is it? System.
Oh, I told him. Four days. You're on. Nobody want to lie. And then.
Oh, yeah.
The more we have. So. So in the beginning, we only go direct.
Yes, I don't know.
Of course.
I don't know. I didn't. Is the language. Jeremy.
Very good.
So are things. Line item.
These guys, you should have gotten the email. Cause that's for Wednesday also.
Yeah, just like I just they got this.
And you just got. I don't expect.
Better ordinance here as if.
Yes.
Can I reswim?
You might.
Okay. Okay. Well, was all. It was like.
Yeah. I think that's. All right.
Oh, this is.
I don't.
No, there's nothing to.
By the way, Bob Lloy sent us a bill for generic services for solar and we sent it to solar and they brought us the reimbursement today.
Okay. And so he'll get paid this week.
Well, sorry. Yeah, it's the claims in the process right now. So he'll probably on these.
Tell me, Howard, broadly. Where do you need to do it, right? Uh, United States of America and to their republic for which it stands. Formation under. And this is all the liberty and justice for all.
Family.
Yeah.
So you found somebody.
Got somebody. So started, but we need to pay them.
They took it out of the budget.
Yeah.
Last year.
Yeah.
So we just gotta have it proved now or ask the council to prove it. Cool. How much will you ask them? Them to approve through the end of the year?
I had been meaning to get this calculated.
Right.
Everything always comes up. I I have. I do not know off the top of my head how many more.
I calculated it, but it's in the folder for next week, the sixteenth. I put it, I advertised it in the paper for a salary ordinance amendment.
Okay.
But I can't remember the amount now. You told me how much it was getting weekly and I calculated it.
Do you remember how many uh? Pay period it is we have left?
Teen, I think it was. No, that can't be right. Nine maybe. Oh, I wish I would have brought that. I think it's the folder.
If it, if it is nine, then the total would be fourteen thousand four hundred.
Yeah.
On a related, related notice is uh for approval for keys for him.
Thank you. That all going with nine?
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
Oh, support. The motion to um. With really approved rate and make the request to the council for the salary ordinance amendment.
That's all favor.
Alright. There you go. Yes.
Make motion to approve keys to be issued to. Mister Cook, the system administrator as listed.
I said. All favor.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Here. We'll go to the chair around if he wants.
Let's just bring these.
No.
No, this. Just go. Send a fun chair.
Okay, good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for having us tonight. This is Connor Cox from Bliss McKnight. Um, Barbara Melham, and we talked that he would appear tonight. He was at the coffee meeting yesterday, and then you met Michael Ains, so.
Nice meet you.
Yeah. Um, so just like um in years past, you put together the binder that you're familiar with.
Hmm.
Um, it goes through the services that have been provided throughout the year by the uh Bliss McKnight Insurance Company, the risk manager. Mark Ennis and I, um, you can see the visits that we did do this year and the upcoming ones for the rest of the year. And then also the other loss control services that were provided, not necessarily trainings, but different procedures, policies. Um, that they've reviewed. We did a jail audit this year. We did um EVOC training for EMS. So I bring this to you just to show you of the services that the insurance company provides besides just providing the insurance coverage. Um, and then you had a chance to review the summary of claims um over the past uh quite a few years. We've kind of a running total so that you can see. Um, the experience that has happened um for the county for um several years at this point. Um, the liability claims, property, automobile, and then the workers comp.
Mm hmm.
Um, notably, the uh, we did have a lot of automobile claims this year, which which you could see in a lot of um. Um, with deer claims, which hard to control.
Right.
Um, loss control deer. So um, just, you know, just part of, part of what uh happens when they're running lights and sirens. They don't have a lot of response time. Um, workers comp. Um, we've had some troubled years. Uh, we had a couple um. Fatalities and severe losses um in twenty twenty-two, which did not help our um in twenty-three. That uh kind of affected our experience uh severely. Um, this year we've done very well, so that helped um when it came to the renewal time. Um, as we've talked in the past, the workers comp is um an experience modification is assigned to your account. And that is um the uh. It's a factor that's assigned to you based on your individual experience here in the county. So. Um, this year our experience mod is a one point five one, which is quite high. It's not the highest that it's been since I've worked with the county. So. Uh, we hope that we don't go in that direction, but based on what we've done this year, it should start heading back in the other direction. So we knew that coming into this year, we were gonna see an increase in premium because of that. Um, and and we did, we'll get to that in just a minute. Um, in section two is the Bliss McKnight um renewal. None of the coverage amounts have changed as far as your liability or your liability deductibles. They're remaining the same. Um. The automobile stays the same at five million. We have a hu- um, coverage deductibles currently at a thousand dollar deductible. And in the proposal, I did give you an option to increase those deductible deductibles to twenty-five hundred for some premium savings if you so elect. So. The property part, um, which is uh that's part is insured with Chubb. Uh, we had an automatic increase on the property coverage amount up to fifty-four million. Um, the changes that we have this year are that the deductible, uh mandatory deductible is going from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand. With a mandatory wind hail deductible of fifty thousand. Um, I'll let Connor kind of talk a little bit about that because he works with entities all over um Indiana and Illinois. And kind of what we're seeing in the marketplace today.
Yeah. Um. With the combination of inflation, the cost of rebuilding things and um more frequent and uh more frequent weather events causing more damage. Um, unfortunately, municipal, Indiana municipal buildings um have not been a risk class that insurers are willing to take on. And so at first, what was presented was a one hundred thousand dollar deductible, but we did just need to come down to fifty thousand. I should, you know, you want right off of a budget. Um, we want them to be as friendly as possible to you, but you know, we are seeing this um industry wide. And actually, we are getting a lot more counties calling us and shopping because um these are the renewals they're getting from an assortment of different insurers. Um, and it's just, it's unfortunate, but rebuilding things are just, people having to do it more is becoming more expensive. So this is what's kind of going on.
So when we get to the premium summary, you'll also see that I did give you an option um to increase that uh basic deductible up to fifty thousand to match the wind and hail. If you, if you wanna just say, okay, our deductibles, just fifty thousand across the board to try to realize a little bit of premium savings and and go that way. So. So that's the, that's the biggest change.
In the full now.
Ten.
Ten.
Ten, yeah, yeah. Yep. And this is what we saw. At before, when I, when I took over your account, there uh since eleven or twelve years, twelve years ago. Back twelve years ago, your company wanted to increase your deductible to a hundred thousand back then.
Mm hmm.
And so, you know, we've been able to kind of hold that off, if you will, for this eleven years. Um, but it's just, it's gonna be the new industry standard for um for uh businesses that have this type of property values. So. Just kind of us unfortunately.
Sounds like we'll get away with fifty thousand this year, but. Next year, we probably should plan for the hundred thousand dollars.
And we, it could be, we don't know. Um, so far, our property coverage, we've had very good loss experience here. We've had that. Um, other than the first year when I took on your account and the um courthouse was struck by lightning the same night. Um, but other than that, really, it's been good. So, you know, they do look at the individual experience and say, you know, which is probably why we didn't have to go to a hundred thousand this year is that. We've, they've been good, you know, and we, we are in a little bit better area than some of the other places that are around us as far as the storms that have been hitting. So. Let's hope it stays that way. Um. So then um premium recap, we're just gonna pass through this because I've got the premiums all recapped at the very, very last page when we'll go through everything. So if you go to tab three, this is the, this is the actual Chubb proposal, which explains all those deductible changes. Shows you your total property values, shows you each location that we are insuring and goes through that, uh, you know, location to location. So you can review that or sure you already have. So we'll go on to tab four, which is our uh workers compensation. So last year we changed our workers comp to a new carrier because of the uh catastrophic losses that we'd had. Um, and uh they were gracious to take us on last year. Um, and you've performed very well this year. So when it came time to renew. Um, or actually, I should go back about six months. So they did a midterm audit. Because you are a new account, they wanna make sure that our payrolls were in line where they needed to be so that we don't end up with a big audit premium at the end of the year. Um, at that time, we did need to bump up the payrolls a little bit because there was more payroll being paid than what had been estimated from the previous year. So they did that. Um, and then the policy renewed with that experience modification of the one point five one, so fifty-one percent higher premium than what. The average um public entity account would would sustain. However, because of the good experience that we've had on that workers comp. They were willing to give us twenty percent scheduled credit, which they can do um based on their discretion. And so that at least brought, I guess, that overall down to thirty-one percent. So it did help a lot. And we're thankful that they were able to do that.
That twenty percent modifier was applied with the fifth, uh, the one point five modifier.
Yeah.
After the one point five was.
It was the one point five was uh applied and then the twenty percent was taken off.
The total after the, okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, reduce the premium by another sixty thousand instead of increasing it overall. So, so um, you know, these things helped. Um, overall, we had in that increase in payroll, which, you know, they'll do another audit here coming up. And we'll adjust um based on what it was, but it should be very close because we did the midterm audit. So we'll see how that goes. Um, then we get to the very uh last tab, tab five. And this is the premium review and summary. You can see all the way back to two thousand nineteen um how our premiums have trended. Uh, and the reasons on twenty twenty-four are listed there as to why they have increased this year. So in our liability. Uh, area, we've got payroll increases um by about ten and a half percent. Additional officers and then just a sheer jail and police exposure rate increase. And Connor, can you kind of maybe talk a little bit about? What we're seeing in the jail and police liability arena as well?
Well, over the past thirteen years, we have seen uh law enforcement liability premiums uh increase significantly. Um. Court cases can take three, four, five years to come into effect. So those bills, if you will, had to be starting to be paid. Um. And because of that, insurers are paying more and more towards law enforcement liability claims. And so premiums across Indiana, Illinois. In the Seventh Circuit District Court that you're in, um, are going up statewide. Um. And that just not a lot that can be done about that right now. But to your answer's credit, um, the risk management that you do participate in, um, we really appreciate it. And you're doing a great job of staying on top of that. And I do think it's going a long way.
Yeah.
Um, then in our employment practices, um, we had a couple uh severe years in that uh part of our uh. Policy as well. It is improving. So that's what we like to see. It is trending, the loss ratio is trending down. So um I'm hoping by next year, that's gonna look a little bit better as well. Um, the automobile liability, um, the liability portion of that policy has trended well. Um, but the physical damage has not.
Right.
So we've, you know, paid a lot of claims with the ambulances. We've had trucks. Um, lots of deer claims and that has just, you know, I mean, the cost of these repairs is significant now. So um. And that's where I gave a deductible option of increasing um that you could save a little bit. And again, it's, you know, when we calculate it out, it's about uh twelve accidents. You'd be ahead. So I don't know. You're right there. Um, and then the property, again, uh, the property is up a little bit. It's not really of that significant with the increases of property values that we had. Um, and then, of course, the deductible options are there. And then the workers comp, we've got that increase for a total of um seven hundred and forty-one thousand forty-three dollars. Um, for the entire package renewal. Um, and if you exercise those options, it would be reduced according to whatever you decided. So.
It's. Okay, calm beer. As with the. Both the twenty-five hundred dollar option and the fifty thousand dollar across the board option.
Yes.
That puts the premiums at seven seventeen.
Uh huh. Yeah. And then.
If we live to one hundred thousand, how much difference?
Yeah, if you leave the deductibles at a thousand on the autos, um, that saved that uh would be um, let's see. Be about ten thousand dollars more. So about seven twenty-seven.
Like you asked, you're. Yeah. Keep the, keep the vehicles. You know, police, you know. Makes it easier to turn around on those. For deer and all. I'd likely do that. Okay. Oh, put the other way, the fifty thousand across the board for both. Yeah.
I, I think that's a good decision, quite honestly. You know, a lot of these, the small claims, you don't want to report those anyway because you don't want those on your experience.
Mm hmm.
So, you know, if you can handle those internally, then, you know, call us for the lightning strikes to the top of the courthouse. I'll take care of that one. Um, and then on the la- very last page, um, there's just an explanation of why. Uh, we saw the premium increases, um, the different loss ratios that were um taken into consideration. Also, um, on uh the property, a note from Chubb is they would like to see some type of a um. Kind of a uh schedule of of utility and roof replacements. So I don't know if that's something that you have in the works or something that maybe you can kind of think about with the maintenance department site, you know.
We've identified a few areas that need that kind of attention. It should be much. More of an additional step to actually.
For him to fill out or make a report.
Yeah, just.
We just did this bill a year ago.
Yeah, right, right. And that was noted um last year when this river was replaced to metal. So. Um, just kind of a schedule, you know, we plan on doing these things up out at these times. Um, and that way we can report that to Chubb and let them know that you are being proactive in these areas. And it helps when they're, when they're looking at the account for renewal and and, you know, what kind of rates they're gonna apply. So. Yeah. So, yeah, that's it. If um you have any questions, of course, you know where to get ahold of us. We would like to see um some additional trainings.
Alright.
Scheduled. If we can kind of try to maybe get, get back on a better schedule with those.
There's a few areas that we've identified. We just need to work out the, the schedule to get them, get them here and have those contrainings conducted.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll get up to county garage and get them going. I know you said pretty good schedule.
Yeah, and I know this has been a crazy, crazy time for everyone. Um. But, you know, everybody loves Mark and uh we're happy to bring them uh Mark as often as you'll have us. And also I've had. Um, they are very proactive with their risk management offers as well. And have some excellent people that are in place to do that. So some people that have, you know, really have some great house experience. And so. Um, we can benefit from that.
That's good.
Yeah. So I would just need, I guess, a motion to accept and make the changes.
Motion to accept the options for the thousand dollar deductible on vehicle insurance and the fifty thousand dollar deductible for both the.
All peril. All deduct, just say like all peril, wind and hail.
That. I'll click. I.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Working with you guys. Thank you, Alex.
Nice meet you.
Thank you.
Only thank. Patty. Hope that my day. Hello.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Evening. Been a long day. I just heard.
Yeah.
Okay. I haven't got one of these before. Um, hi, I'm Patty Enfield. I'm with a company called Globe Life Family Heritage. I'm out of Goshen, Indiana. I handle this area. Um, and across northern Indiana. Um, I've been working with your Stark County EMS here under Jim. And I just wanted to come to see if it might be a possibility to work with the county also. We do things differently than any other supplemental insurance company. We pay more per benefit. Plus, we also give a returner premium. I'm not looking to replace anything that you might have already had in place, but to do a different benefit. And it goes individually based, not necessarily through your payroll unless you ask. So the, the good things are, you know, payroll deductions. If you go individually based. Um, I personalize and go out to do enrollments at whatever facilities that you allow me into. I bring a team, so it's quick and to the point. We help with retention. We help um pay. A different, different um accident, injury, cancer, heart attack, and stroke policies is what we do.
And you say you're already with, yeah.
Yep, I already work with the Stark County EMS. Um, I work with fifteen different fire departments across northern Indiana. And then that's the reason that I got the referral down to Jim um through one of my KMS fire department um. Firefighters.
Right.
Yep. That also worked both, both ways. So I did bring with me some sheets. I also provided her some letter of recommendations. We work with Teficano County. Um, we work with Porter Township, Michigan City, La Porte, um, so different, different cities and such.
Okay.
So just giving you those heads up.
Yeah.
I can leave this stuff.
Leave that stuff.
And then.
Into.
If, if you have any questions, feel free to reach back out. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Have yourself a good night. Thanks. Thanks.
I did forward all those letters of recommendation to you guys.
Yes.
And that's just an ordinance where we're gonna put the money and stuff from the soul.
It's what you can spend the revenue on.
Yes.
You'll have to pass it to the county council, have to pass it on some of them. You'll have to do it. So the way it works is.
Let me see that one more time.
And they're, they just wanna.
Now, won't it have to be a uh the ordinance to create a fund as well?
We did that.
I'm gonna have to give reimbursement.
I think that does that for the first time. I'm trying to bring it up.
You had a thought in the hallway. You go in the hallway? Who? Cause you go in the hallway. I'm trying to do a meeting here.
Oh, that's fine. Go right ahead.
Does, does the fund under paragraph number one, it sets up the ordinance and then expenditure?
Yeah, it gives a fund number here.
What is the fund number?
Four one seven seven is the number given. Yeah, this is worded well enough. It'll, it's still new, so the options open to be creative with. How best to use.
Nobody gave, nobody gave me a whole lot to go on, so I tried to be as experienced as possible.
Motion.
Make the motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second. All favor.
Alright.
You just need something.
Yes, in the county council, it'll be up for their approval in two weeks.
Good.
Then it's, yeah, all that you want to prove.
That's sad, yes. And those claims. And then, did you get a chance to do this ordinance? For those negative funds?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was gonna be the second meeting.
Oh, that's fine. Okay. That's fine. Yes.
And most of the amendments of August nineteenth. So moved. Second.
I favor. Alright.
I'm going to accept the payroll claims of. Ninety-six thousand, five dollars, six. So moved. Second, I favor. Mike Lane on the claims. I got one question on.
Okay.
Page twelve. The park board. The grass refrigeration, fifteen hundred and twenty-six dollars. What was park board, grass?
I have no idea. I will ask. I'll pull the claim one tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Okay.
Make motion to approve the vendor claims with the exception of the one thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars to McGrath.
To who? McGrath?
Our grass, yeah. Park board to McGrath. Second, all favor.
Alright. Well, here since it's a relatively quiet meeting, I'll take a hornet's nest. Uh, we determined what the renewal date on the lease that the. Um. Zip through our is set not.
They will provide it, their notice to quit, which is in February twenty-five. So we gave them at least six months' notice. Um, and then obviously the litigation portion has to go through. Has to go through another attorney.
Mm-hmm.
So that is in the hands of Mr. Cerise out Plymouth.
Okay.
But I told him that. Um. I gave him a point of contact for the council and commissioners, so that. As to the litigation for a matter of it is litigated. That's something that he's handling.
Alright.
But it is February twenty five. I'm sorry, that's that's what current terms over.
Okay.
To answer your question, yeah.
I think that was it.
That's it for the.
That'll next one.
Michael, have you got anything to bring up? Anything from the public? Do it.
Can you please sign or? Write your name here.
I was just wondering if there's any update on the uh weather side.
I just have.
Update on the weather sirens?
Sirens.
Emergency siren.
Eastside light.
They're getting it cleaned, inspected on the fifth.
Really?
Yeah. So.
You know where it's going?
No, I don't.
Okay.
She might be here at the next meeting. We could ask if you're around.
I'll be here for the next one.
Okay. She'll be in here, Tori. I don't know if you know or Kathy knows.
Hey, Don. Don.
It's all I need, yes. Question.
Please sign. Hope we get your name correct. Thank you.
I have a question. On uh July thirteenth. Greg Bees cut a road down at uh one fifty south and three hundred west.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna know who give him the okay to cut that road.
Myself, Charlie Jessick and the county garage.
Okay, I have crop damage down there now because I couldn't get down to my farm.
Yeah.
And I'd like to know who I can turn. That into for some kind of reimbursement.
I would say into the auditor's office.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sir, could you um tell me what that intersection is again?
Uh one fifty south and three hundred west.
Thank you.
Think I saw another hand up over there.
On that crop, didn't you and Larry Center go down there? And make sure everything was okay?
We did, but what we couldn't get nothing down there. To stop the water, so. I'm sitting here. I got flood damage because we couldn't do nothing with it because the road was cut.
Right. Okay. Anybody else? Good.
Um in February.
Could you sign?
I will.
Okay.
In February, I reached out to Rachel in regards to the next era of project roads being rounded up and our property monitors. Being rounded up, she said contact the surveyor. Well, since the project's coming to completion, I reached out to him last week. He finally got back to me today. He said he has nothing to do with that. Um. I argue with him. I researched the duties of accounting surveyor and when I. Said to him, yeah, it is your, it is your responsibility. He agreed. That it was, but he had told me that we have to reach out to next era and deal with this.
I talked to Tom today and we will figure something out. He don't have to reach out right now.
Okay, I'm not gonna reach out to next era.
Right.
That that's up to the county.
Right.
Okay.
And I did talk to Tom just for the meeting tonight.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Like most new adjourned? Oh, wait.
Oh, that's what I just said. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just have a couple papers and I'm gonna leave here. On we were, I went and talked to the sheriff about, you know, we had a meeting. And it's completely. Off the wall. I mean, they want me to get a, want me to have two trucks. They want me to have a big truck. Which I've never had and none of the other guys except uh TNT has one he doesn't use. And they wanted me to have a CEO, which they don't have to have. Um. There's a whole bunch of things on there that that I really don't need to go forward. And they postponed it till October because they said we didn't have enough and I've got everything we need to tow with and all the. The rules on the DOT and. Everything I need to do that with. And there's no way I'm not gonna go out and get a a big truck. You know, cause I'm not gonna use it. He even said that uh Howard would be the one that did all the towing for big towing anyhow around here. And that was like a requirement. It had to be two thousand. And then we had to um get a DOT physical, which I wouldn't have to have a DOT physical unless I had. You know, license. And there's just things that says if I don't sign that contract or anybody signs a contract. Then we're not gonna be able to go. And I asked him, I said, well, am I gonna get the tow in front of my tow lot or anything by that area? And he goes, not at this time, so.
But now we read your the. Uh counts last, was it last month or month before?
Yeah.
And you was actually above most of.
That month.
On. On cards. We read it in the public meeting.
What what was that? What what do you mean?
I get a thing from the sheriff saying how much you get, how much TNT gets, how much uh pit stop.
Yeah, I've got the paper right here.
Right.
I mean.
Are you not the first guy on it?
No, no, it's it's this is it. I'm getting getting the city. That's the numbers they're getting. And I think I got one county.
No, I'm talking the ones from the counties, Steve.
Yeah, no, no, huh?
Cause you got the. Total control of the city, right?
Yeah, I have a contract. I don't have, oh, I'm sorry. You take me a second here.
No rush.
Okay, here was a map before the sheriff got in, okay? This was the county map. Okay. And then this is the map as of. When the sheriff told us that, you know, I was off the county and I'm still only, that's the city, that's all I got. And when they brought pit stop and TNT and this is what they've taken right here. And they've taken wagons towing completely two out of these two. And so I don't get anything in the county. They give me uh like from the banks to the dollar store. In the county, that's the only thing that half mile or something, but they haven't given me. Anything at all up that way. And here's the thing. I was down for two months in the hospital. I had somebody run that truck, but I wasn't. Going, but here's the. The amount of toes that everybody got. I had twenty two.
This is, okay, this is a year they built.
Yeah.
Which includes time you were down.
Yeah, time I'm down. And there was only like uh like uh twenty one calls I missed from the city and. That stuff took it up, but he got. He got a hundred and twenty. There was four hundred calls in the county and between. TNT and pit stuff, they got over two hundred.
Where did you get this?
That's the sheriff gave me that.
That's Stacy printing that out. It's already using names right there.
Okay.
I mean, if you guys wanna leave it here and go over and stuff, that's no problem with me.
I don't need to. This is, I told you before, there's something between you and the sheriff.
I know, I.
The commission has got no control over it.
Yeah, I know. Well, I just thought I'd come back and see if there's any other route I can go. It just doesn't seem.
The only thing I suggest to have your order talk to the sheriff for.
Yeah. But I just don't understand why they're trying to have me, make me have the the truck and all that other stuff and.
That's what I say, I don't.
Yeah, I know, but is there anybody that I can talk to about that? Because that's just trying to. Keep me from towing because I don't wanna do that.
I mean, you told me before you got a lawyer. I've talked to your.
No, I've tried to do this without lawyer. My main thing is trying to talk to somebody, you know?
We have no jurisdiction over what the sheriff does and not on the towing.
Yeah, so I sit in a city meeting and they complain about calls Mr. Hauser gets.
Yeah.
Then I sit in a county meeting and. It's it's the opposite. Basically, how it works with service contracts is. Um and this includes things like towing contracts and attorney contract and engineering contract. It's left up to the purchasing agent to use whatever procedure they deem reasonable and appropriate and also to. As long as they stay consistent with what they do over the years. So towing contracts, in this case. It's left up to the sheriff is the agent for the sheriff's department. He makes that call as he sees fit. Um he can choose to do a contract. He can choose to call whoever he thinks will do the best job. It's just. So I know people are unhappy with it, but service contracts are kind of at the discretion of. The agent who's making the call for the actual service. So in this case, yeah.
I've got a contract with the city that and I met everything and nobody else has actually met having to tow lot in the city. That the mayor authorized, cause I'm when I bought a building uptown to tow for the city. Then maybe go back out there and then both had the other one out of town because they didn't want the city tow lot. And that's why a lot of times, you know, that he don't understand. He's not. Getting the city until they come up with the contract when they're gonna change it.
Yeah, and one of the difficult things too is, you know, each elected official has their own jurisdiction. And regardless of what people think, um you know, the commissioners uh sometimes don't have control over a lot of what the sheriff does. Uh don't have a lot of control over what the treasurer does, the recorder does, because all are elected officials, so. Yeah. People think that if one elected official makes a call they don't like, they go until the commissioners, the commissioners can remedy that. In this case, it's just not the case.
Well, I never, I didn't know if there was anybody who'll protect me when I got completely shut down in the county. I mean, I just got my business shut off and I've been here for forty years going. And then they just dropped them in and I can tell you there's a lot of violations they have. And I mean, I know you guys don't wanna see all this stuff that they did and stuff, yeah. I mean, it's it's as far as driving truck with no plates and insurance and lettering on the side and and they're saying all this other, I've got, I mean, a couple. Wracks like that. And I just took a couple pictures and said, you know, they're complaining about all these things they want us to do, but. I don't know what to do with it. I don't wanna fight anybody or nothing. I wanted to just try to get to be able, if there's a wreck in my front yard, at least to tow it in, you know, that basically. Cause I've been there all my life in that area, but.
I would say you have to go through the lawyer, but sheriff's got his own lawyer. It's not.
Okay, so I could actually probably talk to him, the other lawyer. Yeah, that's what I mean.
That's what I guess. I don't know what that word, other way it's saying.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make it, but you know, just the last time I tried to tell him, I said, I can't see all these other rules and and it's just gonna be affecting me because they're already getting calls now.
Didn't you just say you have rules for the city? They don't follow five.
Well, no, they had, it was the tow lot. You know, it wasn't the truck and and things that didn't, to the truck and they would, they said they won't, that's the way it has to be. Everybody has to have that truck. We have, yeah, okay. Well, I just wanted to see where I can go. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Justin?
Alright, so I did see that. When I tried to sort it out, Wes meaning that you asked. Asked um. Of Stanley to follow up on that email. Um it's been well over a month. Uh this is well within your jurisdiction to ensure that all open door policy.
Commission.
And laws are, you know, and records are being kept. Well, I'm asking, you know. Where is my email? Why can't I get it? Why? Why, why can't I get any answers? You're you're looking around here.
I'm looking around for Stanley.
I understand. I, that's why I was getting ready to say thank you. You're looking around for Stanley, but you had over a month. And I'm sure that you've had contact with Stanley within the last two weeks to where you could have.
Right now, tonight I don't have that email. And then when I get with Stanley, I'll find out for you. Tonight, I can't give you an answer.
I was told. Two weeks ago that it was gonna be a little territory that's.
It's being, yeah, being a little pinch.
About two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I got picked out for asking.
That's your own fault, yeah.
One month ago, you were, you guys told me that you were looking into it. So now it's one month down the road and you still have zero answers for it.
Absolutely, and I definitely looking into it. I'm not trying to hide no doggone email.
I'm looking into and you think you'll be able to tell me something.
I'm telling you, we're still looking into.
What have you found out so far?
Have we found anything out more?
No, the timeline required to dig into this fully is longer than the timeline Mr. Reisner is assuming. Would be sufficient.
First, first, I was told that I wasn't able to get it because there was a bug. And then I was told there was nothing wrong with our system to to. Not it ma- making it, you're able to get this email. So there there in turn the story changed. Why it's not coming here. And I'm told there is nothing wrong with our systems. Instead, we can get it ordered instead. So then I come back again and I'm still not getting it. And now in that meaning that I got kicked out of it. Was once again blamed on some bug that somehow took this one email off of somebody's computer and the whole server. I didn't think otherwise. Come on now, I'm getting fed a whole lot of.
Ain't nobody feeding you a lot.
That's what it sure sounds like.
That's how you wanna make it. So what is? Justin, I, if I misunderstood, this email he keeps talking about, did it get sent to you?
I'm not sure what email we're talking about.
Neither do I. So I was told it was sent to you and if you have it, would you please send him a copy?
Is it?
No.
Is it?
I would, I did not say that it was sent to him.
I didn't say you said it. I said someone else said it. So I'm asking to try to help you.
Who who said that then?
I don't know who said it. It's so. It was supposedly. Sent to you. From Mandy. About a question. You answered her or something, I guess. And then Mandy got it back or supposed to got it back and now it's lost.
Signal the.
Well, this is what I'm referring to. Is Mandy in there to email? This this email is a direct email from public, the public access counselor to Mandy. It didn't. It wasn't anything that was.
Sorry, I was, I was told that you got a copy.
So this one was the, I, cause I I know the email you referred to of him. I know that one. No, this one was direct contact from PAC to the recorder.
It might be easier if you get a hold of whoever you're talking about and ask him for a copy.
I think.
I think we're talking about, we'll make it.
No, the problem is I wanna know why this email got deleted.
Show me the email, maybe we can figure something out.
I'm asking you to show me the email.
Yeah, that's what I do. That's what I thought. Yeah. And I told you we're working on it and you'll you'll get it when I find it.
That you won't find it, couldn't believe it.
Did I delete it? Is that what you said? I didn't hear you. Did I delete it? Is that what you said?
Said.
So I thought.
That's what I thought.
You got anything else?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Motion adjourned.
Right.
I got a quick question.
What's your name?
Randy Luthi.
Randy what?
Luthi, L U T H I. And we're thinking about maybe starting a hog farm. We have to get a permit or what do we have to do to?
Yes, go to.
Planning commission and ask for a permit. That's it?
Yep.
That's the start.
And that'll get you started on it.
Well, what else do I need? The. Fast permit.
Uh. That you had to go through that office.
That's. The planning commission should have all that. That's not information I can recall out of my head, so I'll refer you to the planning commission for all those details. Like the most new adjourned.
Second. On favor.
Alright.
Ma'am. How many eight nine?
Yeah, I have a three nine.
Thank you.
Will you, before you leave, will you sign this for? Thank you.